At this time, I'd like to call the Garden Grove Housing Authority meeting to order with the Secretary. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wexler.
Present.
Mr. Broadwater.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Mr. Nguyen. Commissioner O'Connor. Vice Chair Fong.
Here.
Chair Beard.
Here. Okay, at this time, the first item is oral communications related to the Garden Grove Housing Authority. Seeing none, we have the consent items, we have the status report in the minutes. Entertain a motion?
I'll move the issue. I'll move the balance.
I second that.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
And we have no public hearings tonight. Items for consideration, none. Matters from the Housing Authority, seeing none. We are adjourned to September 24th.
On here. Matters of the Mayor adjourned, where is it? Yeah, it's seated on here.
Before we get started, I'd like to announce that issue number 9B, Consideration of Proposal from Tung Tan Van Hoi Hung Bang, a nonprofit organization for the operation and management of Ted Festival. We're going to hold that over till September the 10th, so if you're here to speak on that, it won't be, there won't be any action taken on that this evening.
Okay, the City Council had two closed item matters, two items, and the first one was the federal litigation by the Union of Vietnamese Student Associations on the Ted Festival. We have nothing to report back on that. And the second matter, we did not hear, we will go into a closed session after this meeting to hear the negotiations with the police department. Okay, at this time, we will open up the Garden Grove City Council meeting, we'll have the pleasure of ladies and gentlemen, and we will have the.
Of the United States of America, and to the government, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, we gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and for our fellow citizens. Amen.
So my understanding, we have some presentations this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Susan Emery to make the presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is honored to recognize outstanding local residents who have achieved academic success in higher education. There was a brief reception earlier this evening where the Mayor and City Council had the opportunity to meet and congratulate each college graduate. Here in Garden Grove, we know that some form of higher education or training is more important than ever. There is always a need for highly trained and highly educated citizenry, and the city is proud to recognize each local college graduate. I'd like to take this time to call each honoree forward, introduce them and their academic degree, then share a few words about their future endeavors. Will each of you come to the podium as I call your name? You may be seated after I'm done reading your achievements. We begin with Hikmet Ahmed. Currently working as payroll manager at her company, Hikmet plans to move up the corporate ladder now that she has received her Master's in Public Administration from Cal State University, Long Beach. Hikmet is grateful to the city for recognizing her academic achievement and hopes it will inspire younger generations to be successful in their educational and career choices. Next, we have Jim Dale Longa. Aspiring to attain his graduate degree, Jim went back to Cal State University, Long Beach, for his Master's in Public Administration while working full-time for the city. Now that he has accomplished his goal, he plans to continue to work for local government, specifically for the city of Garden Grove, and hopes to have more free time now to spend with family and friends and get a little more sleep than he has in the past two years. Next, will Jenna Howard please come forward? Jenna has always been interested in the arts. She pursued her interest at Cal State University, Fullerton, achieving her Bachelor of Fine Arts in Animation. She plans to get a job as a concept or storyboard artist in the animation industry in Burbank. Good luck, Jenna. Next, we have Fareed Kaya. Fareed received his Master's in Public Administration from Cal State University, Long Beach. With his Master's degree, he plans to work with the United Nations, assisting underprivileged societies while promoting health, education, economic development, and equality throughout the world. Thank you. Next is Zerli Nabi. Receiving her Associate in Science degree with concentration in liberal arts and social sciences, Zerli plans to continue her education and enroll in nursing school. Her main goal is to become successful in the nursing industry. Good luck, Zerli. Now, you'll notice the next three all have the same last name, and it's not a coincidence. So we'll start with Diana Pomeroy. Could you please come to the podium? Diana received her Master's in Geology from Cal State University, Long Beach. She isn't stopping there, though. She plans to pursue her PhD in Geological Sciences and teach at a community college or university. Thank you, Diana. Next is Elizabeth Pomeroy. Elizabeth received her Bachelor of Arts degree in Sociology from Cal State University, Long Beach. Now that she has graduated, she plans to continue her part-time job tutoring English and looking for various internships in Human Resources. Good luck to you, Elizabeth. And last, from the Pomeroy clan, we have Kenneth Pomeroy. Achieving his goal of obtaining a Bachelor's degree in Geography from Cal State University, Long Beach, Kenneth is now trying to find a line of work that will not only help him achieve his own personal goals, but also contribute to bettering the community and the society as a whole. Thank you, Kenneth. And last, will Katie Victoria please come forward? Aspiring to finish her graduate's degree, Katie returned to Cal State University, Long Beach, and attained her Master's degree in Public Administration. She plans to continue her professional development as an administrative analyst for the Water Services Division of the city of Garden Grove. An exciting future lies ahead for these Garden Grove ambassadors, and the city couldn't be prouder to have such outstanding diplomats in the community. Congratulations and good luck to all of you.
At this time, we'll open it up for oral communications, and we have a number of cards here. Peter Katz, why don't you come up first?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and staff. We got a great audience here at the start. I'm here once again to promote the Vietnam War Museum. We have a couple of events coming up here in September and October. But I have a couple of footnotes first. In Seattle this week, two 16-year-old boys sensefully beat to death, an 87-year-old veteran, while he was sitting in his car waiting for a friend to meet him at Starbucks. He was beaten to death. This gentleman was in the battle for Okinawa. If you know that Okinawa was the first island in World War II of the Japanese mainland, it was one of the fiercest battles of the war. Only one out of three Americans survived that battle, and only one worse, one out of every four Japanese survived. So, once again, this museum is dedicated to the idea that freedom is never free. We want to build this museum and use these fundraisers as a way of reflecting on the horrors of war, but how we must defend this country and its freedoms and teach its lessons to the generations to come, how constantly we have to be reminded of where we've been and where we're going. Unfortunately, someone always wants to take what's yours. And it's a very somber note that tonight, as we sit here and talk, within the next 72 hours, we will be involved in a new conflict. The United States will launch a cruise missile attack on Syria within the next 72 hours, and this has been signed off at the highest level at the White House. So think about our soldiers and come and enjoy the two events that we have. First, Thursday, September 26, 2013, right here in the Community Foundation Center, we have the All-American Boys Choir, which will be presenting an event to veterans. It's free for veterans to attend this event. $10 for adults attending this, and it's going to be a patriotic evening in support and commemoration of our veterans. So come and enjoy the musical program, and bring your friends, and bring a soldier, and bring someone to mentor that's come back from either Afghanistan or Iraq. And the other event is on Wednesday, October 23, the Vietnam War Museum of America has its inaugural fundraising event for the golf. It's a golf tournament at the Naval Golf Course in Seal Beach at 5660 Orange Wood Avenue in Cypress. It's a great event. If you know any golfers out there, it's a real deal, from what I understand, $175, that includes your dinner, your cart, and your green fees. So come out and spend a day. There will be a dinner that evening. If you don't play golf, a $50 dinner. Come support the museum and bring your family out and enjoy the evening. So we're looking forward to seeing you at either or both of these events and help us build this museum. We're going to be proud of this event someday, and it's a reflection on the history of this community and the American soldier, the Vietnamese soldier, and the civilians that migrated here and the struggles that they empower, so in helping to make this a better country and to create a freer world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council and staff. This afternoon, I had the privilege of chairing the Special Needs and Transportation Committee of the Orange County Transportation Authority. Many people in Orange County have disabilities that prevent them from driving their own vehicles, and they have to rely on public transportation. But a lot of them are not aware that there is a special program. It's called ACCESS. You've probably seen the small buses driving around Orange County, say ACCESS, and OCTA on them. These are buses that are specifically designed to transport people with physical disabilities. They can sign up for the program. It is at very low cost. The vehicles will pick them up at their homes, take them to their destination, and bring them back. This is a program that just went through a transition from one vendor to another. We now have the company MV Transportation, which is providing this service. There is also the Yellow Cab Company, which is participating. So between the two of them, they provide a chance for people to get around that ordinarily, because of one disability or another, could not ordinarily be able to go to various places. They need to rely on friends and neighbors, take them to doctor's appointments, and things like that. So anyone that's interested in finding out more about the ACCESS program can call 714-636-7433. That's the ACCESS Custom Relations number, and you can get more information. And if you do sign up and qualify for the program, then you can get one of these booklets that explains everything about the program, how you can call to get a ride, and it's also in Spanish. And there is some information here in Vietnamese. So it's designed to help people in Orange County be able to get around. Now, Mayor Broadwater, you talked about your visit to New Orleans and the World War II Museum you saw there. Well, we visited New Orleans, my wife and I, and unfortunately, I didn't know about the World War II Museum, or I would have gone there. I did visit the Civil War Museum and several other historic sites in New Orleans, including a showboat, but I missed the museum. But how many people go to visit another city and then come home and read about something that they didn't know existed and they could have visited while they were there? We have some interesting places in Garden Grove. The Crystal Cathedral, a lot of people come to visit that. We also have our Heritage Museum on Euclid. Now, I wonder how many people that live in Garden Grove have ever visited that museum, and how many should visit it to see something of the history of our city? Now, one of the things that they have is a sign, and one of the things that Main Street does not have is signs. Now, I'm looking both ways, riding up and down Euclid, and I see no signs saying, "Visit Historic Main Street." I think it's something the city could do. They could put one on Euclid at the left-turn lane. They could put one on Euclid coming south, where that small triangle is, where Century Street meets Euclid. They could put one on Garden Grove Boulevard on each side of Main Street, on the Meridian, saying, "Visit Historic Main Street." So this is something the city can do at very little cost and help to encourage more visitors to our Main Street. I also read about the situation that happened in Spokane, about the veteran who survived the Battle of Okinawa and then unfortunately was beaten up. And it's sad that he probably had very little money with him, and had given the choice, he probably would have said, "Here, take the money." But he wasn't given that choice. So I would like, Mr. Mayor, if you would, close the meeting in honor of Delbert Belton.
Delbert or Gilbert?
Delbert Belton.
Robin Marcario, you can just leave the red light on.
Good morning, Council, staff, and Garden Grove residents. I'm Robin Marcario, lifelong resident of our great city. I wanted to address a couple of simple things. Item number 6E, I definitely support the Municipal Water District and Orange County. They have a turf removal program. The grass, remove your grass, go to the water board and remove your grass, and you get a bit of a rebate for doing so. I know the city has undertaken and participated in the program as well. Over there near the Police Department, we've put lots of drought-resistant plants. Public Works has done a great job, and the person behind that is Patricia. She does a great job with that kind of stuff. The other thing is, so anybody that wants to participate in that grass removal program, go to the Municipal Water District of Orange County, and you just look under Turf Removal Program. And it's roughly a little less than a dollar per square foot. For each square foot, it requires 44 gallons of water per year. So removing the grass and putting in just about anything else will save some water. Second thing is, I have a picture of a blighted billboard on the southwest corner of Catelan-Gilbert, there at that RCO station. It's been like that for at least six months. I have a picture for your view. Either clean it up or get rid of it would be my preference. Okay? Third thing is, I just wanted to highlight that this is the season for mosquitoes, and so if you see any mosquitoes in your neighborhood, call Vector Control. It's part of public health. Please call, and the Vector Control people will come out and treat the areas. If you have rats or if you see fire ants, call Vector Control. It's part of your tax assessment. It's paid for. I think it's only a few dollars for each property. The number for Vector Control is 971-2421. For mosquitoes, one more time. The last thing is, the city has on their website, put an icon on there, easy to get to, it's called Reimagine Downtown Garden Grove. I highly recommend you go there and click on the site. You'll get the opportunity to see a fantastic little video of Mayor Broadwater doing a little plug for the program, Reimagine Garden Grove. He's soliciting our input. Boy, what a great concept, including the neighborhood and including all of the residents. I think it's a great idea. On the website, I'll read verbatim from the little page. Welcome to Reimagine Downtown, a community effort to take good parts of downtown Garden Grove and tie them together into a different form of tourist destination, and the downtown should be a place to engage in the community, the living room of Garden Grove, and a resplendent public place that attracts people. The conversation of the future of downtown has begun with the community online forum. A range of topics will be discussed, from the general and visionary to the technical and detailed. As we seek the best ideas, the goal for these ideas is to create a vision slash master plan with an implementation program. There are lots of ways to make it happen, once the direction is in place. While the vision plan will unfold over 20 years guiding future projects, and design elements, new activities, events, and programs can begin immediately. When you post your ideas, be constructive. This helps the city determine which ideas are the best. I've signed up. It's quick and easy to do. I think this is fantastic, including the public, and I thank you all.
Thank you. Is there a fellow named Andrew Dong here?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, people of Garden Grove. I want to kind of piggyback on a few of the things that were said here tonight. I'll start right off with Robyn's. And I too am on the MindMixer website. I've actually been participating in that for a couple of months before the city got their page rolling, and it is a wonderful website. I would encourage everybody to voice their opinions. When you have the opportunity, you should definitely do it. And next, to bounce off of Charles, this Sunday, you have the opportunity to visit the Garden Grove Historical Society in Stanley Ware Ranch. I will be leading a docent tour from 1:30 to 3 o'clock. Adult admission is $5. If you haven't come down and taken the tour lately, please do. It's a fun afternoon, and you'll get a lot of local history. Now, I'm going to jump back to something I've been speaking about for over a year now, and this is the upcoming 2013 Garden Grove Independent Film Festival. That's going to be happening October 24 through the 27 on Historic Main Street and in the Village Green, the Garden Grove Shakespeare Amphitheater, and with your assistance in the Gem Theater, which is why I'm here tonight. The City Council has the power to grant authority to the Recreation Department to sponsor an event, making an event a official city event. We are asking Garden Grove to become an official sponsor of the 2013 Indy Film Festival. By the contract at the Gem Theater, they are obligated to provide free usage of the gem for events with the City Council's permission. We're asking you to step up and make the film festival your 2013 Garden Grove-sponsored event. They've been closed due to fire for quite some time, and to my knowledge, they're for quite some time, and to my knowledge, their, uh, obligated responsibility to provide a city event there has not been met yet this year. The months are dwindling down. I think this would be a perfect opportunity to, uh, step up and join in the film festival. Um, we've been, this is our third year in Garden Grove throwing such a festival, and we've really done it on the string, just put everything we can as residents into this to make it a great event. It can only get better. This year, we've got fourteen bands which are performing for free in the Village Green. We've got free movies in the Village Green. This is an event that we're reaching out to all cultures here in Garden Grove. We've got a Hispanic night theme. We've got an Asian night theme. We've got fifties, uh, rock-and-roll theme to go in conjunction with the car show. If the city were to jump on this, it could only get bigger and better. The Gem would be a perfect location to be showing movies. There hasn't been movie shown there in almost ten years, so that would be wonderful. I think the last movie shown in there was 2006, when we celebrated the fiftieth anniversary of Garden Grove's incorporation, and that was a wonderful event. Um, residents really enjoyed getting back and watching a movie inside the Gem. My family's been going there for generations. Uh, sadly, my generation doesn't have that opportunity, but for this film festival, we sure would. It'd be a great way to re-welcome the Gem back to the public. It is a city-owned, privately managed place. I think it'd be great if the city got behind this. I encourage you to, uh, get in touch with me soon because I have a lot of information. I'd love to make it an agenda item, if we could get together and discuss this in the future. And lastly, on September the 7th, it's a Saturday, 5:00 PM, the newly op, the new, soon-to-be-open Frida Cinema in Santa Ana is opening, and they're having a seminar, 5:00 PM, discussing the importance of film festivals. Um, this Frida Cinema is gonna be a wonderful thing in downtown Santa Ana, and I'd love to invite you all to that meeting. I will be happy to provide you with all the information via email this evening, and please, once again, consider sponsoring the 2013 festival. Thank you.
Thank you. I have probably twenty-five cards here, but they're all marked for 9B, and we have pulled 9B. We won't, we've set it off for two weeks. Has anybody got a card here that is still here? Does anybody wanna speak for oral communications? Please come to the front. Have you filled out a pink card?
I have.
I would like you to do that before you leave.
Will do. Um, good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ray Gibb. I'm a fairly new resident to Orange County and to Garden Grove. I moved here in 2004 from Las An, uh, from Las Vegas, Nevada, and since I've been here, I've gotten involved in the entertainment industry, more so than I was in the past. I work hand-in-hand with Josh McIntosh on this festival, IndieFest USA. We were formerly in downtown Disney. Downtown Disney was starting to support it, but they found out that a film festival by them could make them a lot of money, so they didn't renew with us. So we moved to Garden Grove. Guess what? The next year, when Disney went to have their great festival, it petered out. It fizzled. There was nothing there. The, the organizers were not given the cooperation that they were promised. They didn't make it a second year. A new survey that just came out this year says that any festival that makes it past their five-year anniversary will be a success. This is IndieFest USA's seventh year. We're two years past that hump. So guess what? All that means to the City of Garden Grove, when you all come on board and support us and get behind us in any way that the city can do, IndieFest can and has the power to rival Newport Beach. Newport Beach is what it is because the city got behind it from day one when they started out there. Look where they are now. This year, they realized three hundred thousand dollars income from sales, tax revenues, and hotel room revenues because of the festival. City of Garden Grove can see the same thing, but we're not asking for money this year. That's not saying we won't do that next year, but this year, we're out for your support, for your signature saying, "We're a hundred percent behind this festival. We're here for you guys. Let's do this thing." Thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to many years with Garden Grove and the festival.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll close oral communications. We will recess the City Council, and we'll go to the successor agency.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Vaughn?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. Um, thank you. We've already done oral communications, uh, simultaneously with City Council, so we'll move on to consent items.
Move to approve?
Second.
Call them out.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
We have no public hearings, no items for consideration. Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to sanitary district.
Very good.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
President Vaughn?
Here. Well, with the consent items, before we call for a vote on that, I'd like to have a little explanation about 2A, as far as the verbiage of that. I was a little confused when I read it because we're apparently, um, gonna have an execution of a reimbursement agreement with the City of Anaheim, an execution of a cooperative agreement with the County of Orange. Could you please clarify that language for all to understand?
Be here to, uh, to do that for you.
I'm sorry, but, uh, can you repeat, repeat the question, please?
Oh, yes. I was just a little confused when I read, uh, Bill as far as our objective for 2A, as far as the different agreement between the City of Anaheim and the County of Orange, and our role in the whole process.
Uh, it's a, uh, joint sewer that we share with the City of Anaheim, and, uh, in its, in the ceritos at that particular location is, um, belongs to the county. So what our role is, uh, the county wishes to construct a street improvement there, uh, and we want to make sure that the sewer line is upgraded prior to the street improvement. So we're executing an agreement, uh, this, this particular one, with, with Anaheim and also the, uh, the county for the reimbursement of the, of the, of Anaheim's share of the sewer, and for, uh, giving permission for the, for, uh, the county, uh, to basically delay a little bit their, uh, their construction and go ahead and actually build that part of the sewer.
So if I understand it, then basically, we're gonna be reimbursing Anaheim's agreement with the county. Is that right?
Uh, no. Actually, Anaheim will be, uh, contributing, um, their fair share of, of the sewer. They, most of the flow in the sewer at that point is Anaheim's.
Okay.
It hasn't made its way down into Garden Grove at that point. And so, uh, we will have a little bit of cost, a hundred and thirty-three thousand, but the, uh, mo, most of the cost, uh, design and construction, which is 1.3, will be bore by Anaheim and, uh, the county.
And that's based on a pro-rata share of the pipeline?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment? I work for the County of Orange. I don't work for an agency that's connected with anything to do with this agreement. I wanna make that clear.
Um, and with that disclosure, you would be authorized to participate in the vote on it, uh, as, as a result, because you don't have any interest, your department doesn't have any interest in that.
Same with you?
Yes, that's true. My, uh, involvement with the DA's office has no involvement with this particular part of the county. Um, if this time, please, uh, have a motion to approve.
Move the item.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Is that for the whole consent items, or just?
Uh, for both 2A and 2B.
Okay.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
All right, we'll move to, uh, 4A, which is items for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Oh, well, this is a better, yeah, yeah, I got it.
It's so electronic.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Tonight, Council is being asked to award a contract to Connaught Pipeline Corporation for the construction of almost seventy-nine-hundred feet of sewer lines in Onx, Lamp lighter, Lenore, Monarch, Lamson, Brookhurst, and Bonzer Avenue. Your staff report has a location map for your reference. The new sewer lines vary in sizes from ten inches to eighteen inches, and will minimize sewer capacity issues within the area there, the areas they are placed. This work will cost almost two million dollars. Staff received and opened six bids on July 1st this year and determined that Connaught Pipeline Corporation was the lowest responsible bidder. Should the board decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work, uh, by October and should be complete with, uh, in one year. Uh, the project, uh, was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with sewer funds. This concludes staff's report.
And just to clarify, the, um, contract amount that we finally accepted is actually below what the engineering estimate was initially correct?
It happens.
By about like three hundred thousand?
Yes.
Great. Uh, move for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Any matters from the board? Seeing none, we'll adjourn, and we'll reconvene the districts here on September 24th at 6:30.
Okay, let's reconvene the City Council meeting. We'll go to six consent items.
Uh, Mr. Mayor has recommended that items 6A through 6H be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion requested by a council member.
I'll move the balance.
Second.
Before we get there, can I ask one question, guys? Real, real fast? I had a question about, um, let me see where my notes are. There was an issue that had basically different phases of a, uh, here it is, uh, on 6C. Um, it had mentioned, uh, the cost there, and it said there was like three different phases, and we're only gonna actually vote on phase one of the project, right?
That's, that's for the state, uh, control system, 6C?
Yeah, uh, 6, uh, Char, uh, C, Charlie, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, the SCADA, the SCADA system. Uh, right, this is just phase one, and, uh, once we, once we complete it, then we will, we will continue to go out with, uh, with the following phases. The, um, and that is, uh, in a fixed amount of, for forty-four thousand.
So we should expect probably in the future to have, uh, phase two and phase three to approve?
Correct. Soon as we get, uh, as soon as we get that information in, it's, it's just gonna take a little bit of time.
Explain what the SCADA system is.
Ah, okay. Uh, that is, um, hang on one second, let me pull it back up. It's a monitoring system, um, that operates all of our different, uh, uh, control valves, uh, by, basically computer, computer-operated, and, uh, that, that allows us to mix water at our facilities. And, uh, that's all, all over our phone lines and, uh, computer-controlled, and, uh, we were able to set that up, uh, and make sure that our water, uh, the amounts that are in there for chlorination and also the different waters that we're mixing together, be it pump or import, are done correctly. It's a, uh, a computer-controlled system.
Thank you very much. Entertain a motion.
Second.
We had a motion, didn't we?
Yeah.
Second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Let's go to public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, you have a public hearing to consider the city's 2013 Drinking Water Public Health Goal Report, and Mr. Murray is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, pursuant to the 1974 Clean Water Act, the city is required to conduct a pub, public hearing and approve the 2013 Drinking Water Public Health Goal Report. The, uh, Public Health Goal Report and the city's water quality report are both attached to your staff report for your reference. Uh, additionally, the city has distributed the water quality report to its customers, and it has been available on the city's website since July 1st of this year. Both reports contain a lot of technical data, but the bottom line is the city's drinking water is in full compliance with the enforceable standards set by the state and federal government. The Public Health Goal, uh, Goal Report is designed to help water purveyors improve their product by setting goals that are possible to obtain if everything goes right. Our report shows that we exceed, uh, these goals, uh, on the following naturally occurring constituents: arsenic, uranium, uh, gross alpha and beta radiation, which is basically background radiation, and, and total, uh, coliform bacteria. Uh, once again, I need to state that, uh, we are below the state and federal required, uh, levels, and that these, these goals, a lot of the goals are just zero, and, uh, it's not terribly feasible to obtain. Um, so that's why we do wanna state what we have and what the goals are, and that's what's, that's what's contained in the report. Now, staff recommends that City Ca, or City Council conduct a public hearing on these, uh, on the Public Health Goal Report, and subsequently consider approving the report, and this concludes staff's report.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Does anybody like to speak on this issue? Approval of the City Garden Grove's 2013 Drinking Water Public Health Goal Report. Seeing none, at this time, we will close the public hearing. I would entertain a motion to accept or approve of this report.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
Got a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Let's go to items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, 9A is an order of contract to John T. Malloy Company for a project at Barraro and Haster, and Mr. Murray is here to give a staff report on this.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, Council is being asked to award a contract to Mr. John T. Malloy Incorporated for the construction of almost eighteen-hundred feet of new twelve-inch water main in Barraro Street from Twin Tree to Chapman, and over thirteen-hundred feet of eight-inch water, water main in Haster Street from Ascot to Simmons and continuing on Simmons. Your staff report has a location map for your reference. The new water lanes will increase the fire flow rates in the area at a cost of just over seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. Staff received and opened five bids on July 29th of this year and determined that John T. Malloy was the lowest responsible bidder. Should Council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work by October and should be complete by December of this year, late December. Uh, this project, uh, was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with water funds. This concludes staff's report.
Any questions for staff? Entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
9B has been, uh, set aside for two weeks until September the 10th. Uh, let's go to matters for the Mayor, City Council members, and the City Manager. Ms. Beard, Mr. Beard.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna wish you, uh, Mayor Broadwater, a happy birthday.
Oh, it's only my fifty-fifth, so...
I'll enjoy it. And, um, I wanna wish everybody a happy and safe Labor Day coming up, and just, uh, good luck to all the students starting school this coming year, so, that's it.
Very good. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you.
I also wanna remind everyone to stay safe for the holidays and shop in Garden Grove.
Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor, and also for all the mothers out there, this past weekend, we had the Vietnamese, uh, Mo, Mother's Day. It's called Vu Lang in Viet, in Vietnam. So, uh, for all the mothers out there, happy Mother's Day, Vietnamese style.
Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you.
And make sure to go on the city's website, click on the link to sign up on Mind Mixer, and offer all your ideas and creative suggestions for our Reimagine Downtown program coming up.
Okay. On Thursday, September 26th, 2013, the Vietnam War Museum of American Foundation is proud to present a concert for veterans featuring the internationally acclaimed All-American Boys Chorus. The concert will salute all men and women of the U.S. Armed Forces and begin at 6:30 PM here at the Community Meeting Center. The patriotic tribute will feature a medley of the five U.S. Armed Forces songs, Broadway selections, and pop songs for all generations. Tickets for the U.S. Armed Forces veterans and active military personnel are free. Adult tickets are ten dollars, and children under twelve are five. A special VIP pre-concert reception will be held at 5:30 PM. For ticket or concert information, please call 714-741-5291, or visit the city's website. It's gonna be a great evening. These kids can really sing, and, uh... It's going to be a great evening, and these kids can really sing, and I'm sure that it'll be well worth the $10, or if you're a veteran, you can pass on that $10 and get in free. But anyway, we'd like to see the place packed if we can get it, and thank you very much.
What's the date and time again?
Okay, September the 26th, 2013, and it is at 6:30 p.m. At this time, we will close this meeting. We will close it in the name of the veteran up in Seattle that had a problem with two young men, and they killed him, and it's a shame. His name is Delbert Beltran, and we do close the meeting in his name.
Guys, we're going to return to closed session.
Yeah, we're going into closed session, but before we go into closed session, we're going to cut cake and eat it. So everybody's welcome to a p-